This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the March 1st, 2023 South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We have all commissioners present this evening. I would ask you all to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted to the website for public access. At this time, I will ask our township manager, Tom Petrucci, to please review our public virtual meeting rules.
The hybrid meeting rules are as follows. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the board president will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized, then move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise that may cause interference in the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring "go to" meeting will then unmute your microphone and you will have the opportunity to comment or ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I'd also like to announce that the Board of Commissioners did meet in executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, Courtesy of the Floor, this is an opportunity for any member of the public, whether in person or virtually online, to approach the board for any non-agenda items. Is there anyone in the audience? Sir, if you come up and press the button right there, you'll see a green light. You give us your name and address.
Yes, hi. I'm Mark Bassis, 807 Pinnacle Drive, and I've lived here 30 years, and I love living here because of all the work that you do. Thank you. I really admire your work. Thank you. A year ago, I had the privilege of being in the South Whitehall Township Police Academy Session 1. And Police Chief Dorni, it was one of the greatest times of my life. I learned so much. So did my wife. Thank you. And I hopefully will continue that. Really appreciate your service. The reason, the second reason I'm here is a very dear friend of mine and neighbor moved here from Wisconsin. He's a physician. He has a very large physician practice still in Wisconsin, and he's lived here for almost three years. And he just mentioned to me a couple of months ago, said, what is this? I'm getting a bill from a company called Burkheimer. I have no idea. Why would I send them money? And they say I'm late. And I had to explain the whole process. It's South Whitehall Township, the tax income, or tax credit income is billed through a third party. And he still has trouble understanding. He goes, well, why doesn't say South Whitehall Township? And he's very upset because if he would have known it was for us, and it was his responsibility, he has no problem paying it. But he didn't know what it was, and he's been penalized by the township for a lot of late fees. And hopefully, in the future, we can make sure that Burkheimer indicates that it's for South Whitehall Township taxes, tax income, if there's a phone number, what to contact, because this gentleman is a 1099 employee who moved here from Wisconsin and would have no knowledge of what we all have that have lived here a long time. So hopefully, we can address somehow making sure Burkheimer notifies that. And hopefully, my neighbor doesn't have to pay the penalty because he's happy to pay his taxes, but he's very upset. And this is his first experience dealing with South Whitehall Township. And it should be a great experience because it's great living here, but it did not set out a good tone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you for bringing that to the board's attention. I saw some other hands, sir. Good evening.
My name's Mike Przaznik. Michael Przaznik. I live at 2815 West Highland Street. I wrote notes. I've lived there for 22 years. I live at the corner of Main and Highland. The front of my home is on the border of City of Allentown. My sewer and water entered the front of my home. Lehigh County Authority had replaced a water main in front of my home. In doing so, they broke off my sewer main. It wasn't obvious. It had just collapsed. Recently, I called South Whitehall Township. Public Works sent out a gentleman to look at it. It was a Sunday evening. Did what he could for us. Couldn't find anything. So then recommended I call City of Allentown. Had City of Allentown come out. Actually, not City of Allentown, Lehigh County Authority. They came out and pretty much told me the same thing. I then contacted South Whitehall Township on Monday morning, and we confirmed that the sewer line was broken. I felt as if Lehigh County Authority was giving me the runaround, so I placed a call to South Whitehall Township again. I was put in contact with Mike Elias and Herb Bender. What a godsend. They stayed till a wee morning, making sure it got taken care of, much longer than they had to. I want to commend their steadfast commitment to not only the township, but also to a simple person like myself that is here for their accolades. Thank you.
Mike, thank you very much for sharing that information with us. Yes, sir.
Dave Torrey, 1351 Deerfield Drive. Thank you for getting the dam repaired. It looks real nice. The only thing I would like to see as an addition, if the rock that Elmer Weir and Robert Guth and two other men inscribed their names on back in 1904, I don't know if that can be cleaned up, pressure washed, or something, so the names are more visible. And then also put a sign there, a typical sign you have to park. There's one on the outside that says, you know, Weir Mill Park or something, but Weir Mill Dam, built by these four men. See the stone below? And to service a gristmill on the other side. You know, you can photograph, you know, draw it up or whatever, but I think it'd be nice to, nice finishing touch. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Dave. Thank you. Yes, sir. Could you just please come up to the microphone?
I could pass a couple of compliments.
Thank you. If you'd just give us your name and address first, please.
Kevin Temerler, 6220 Hilltop Road. I am also employed at Green Tree Nurseries, which is within the township. This is regarding Delta 8 THC gummies, which is a different isomer of THC, which is because it's not actually banned legal to sell unregulated in Pennsylvania at this time. Recently, in Montgomery County, several people purchased these edibles and wound up overdosing on fentanyl that had been added to them because these aren't regulated in any way, and probably most people selling them aren't really aware of what's in them or using testing kits. It's not really clear what's in them. I have seen these kinds of products sold or advertised at multiple places in the township. I've been in touch with several state representatives on the topic, and while I believe that legislation is in the works to potentially ban these products, I don't know if there's been any progress, and Lord knows, things are going on in Harrisburg that might or might not actually get done. So I just wanted to suggest that it might be good for Mr. Petrucci or Chief Dorni to approach some of the shop owners that are selling these products and let them know that this is a risk. I suspect because they're marketed similar to CBD and other relatively harmless products, that people might not even be aware this is a possibility. I thought it would be a good idea to bring it to the township's attention. And to join the stream of compliments, I wanted to say that Mr. Petrucci has been extremely responsive to constituent calls.
Excellent. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
If I could address that just really quickly, we have actually done that with the Lehigh County District Attorney's Office, with Lehigh County Drug Task Force. We've gone to several of the shops that were advertising it, specifically right across from Warfield Middle School is one of those locations. And we actually have undercovers that have bought some of those items, and we field tested it, and we actually seized all of those products within the last year, when it was Delta 8, Delta 9, Delta 10. And it's a derivative. They keep changing it. It gives the kids the high until it gets caught up through the legislation to get a law changed indicating it's illegal through Title 35. But we have in fact done that. We've given letters through the DA's office for that, and if they would actually come back, and we do spot check and make purchases of items that are for sale through the Lehigh County Drug Task Force, and we take it to the lab and test it. So as of right now, we've had none of the very, very dangerous stuff that we've tested in the recent past here, but we have seized a lot of the product previously.
Oh, that's great to hear.
So yeah, so we actually, we jumped on that right away. Yeah, with the Lehigh County District Attorney's Office is fantastic with that, especially we have a task force officer on the task force as well. And as soon as those signs came up and started advertising it, especially near kids, we started that process immediately. So yeah, we are absolutely working on that.
All right, terrific. Great to hear. Thank you. Welcome.
Commissioner Kelly?
I'm sorry, if there's anyone else who wants to comment.
I was just going to ask if there was anyone else. Sure. Please come to the microphone and give us your name and address.
Vinnie Quinn, 1407 North 21st Street. I just wanted to update you on the Green Award Scholarship Program. We did that last year, and nobody applied. So this year, we're going to change it a little bit. We did have a residency restriction in there for South Whitehall Township only. We're taking that out. We're also going to add nursing. So it's for fire, police, medic, or nursing. So we're going to try it again this year, the same thing, $1,000, two scholarships. And we'll be on, we'll be at the high school on March 23rd for the career day. We'll have a table there with some of our members to pass that information and hopefully, applications for the scholarships. So that's the update on that.
Excellent. Thank you for that update, and good luck with that scholarship. That's a wonderful opportunity. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to approach? Anyone online? Very good. I'm sorry, Commissioner Osborne?
Yes, thank you. I just want to circle back to some of the people who commented. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for feeling free to come and express whatever it is they want to say. But, and I'm sorry, sir, I forgot your name. This is the one about the THC. I'm sorry.
Kevin.
Kevin. Can I ask, how did you become aware of this? And I'm sorry if you mentioned that and I missed it. I don't think I would have missed that. Okay, all right. Thank you. I was just, I'm not aware of it, but, and that's why I asked, so. Yeah, yes. And the gentleman before you, Mike, I think that is your name. I want to thank you so much for coming and thanking our staff, Herb and Mike Elias. We don't get a lot of positive comments, and so when we do, especially when it goes directly to the performance of our staff, it is so nice to hear that. So I want to thank you for taking the time out from your day, you know, to thank South Whitehall Township employees. And Mark, for the topic that you brought up, I just wanted to give our township manager an opportunity. This is about Burkheimer representing not only South Whitehall, but other municipalities within Lehigh County as a tax collection agency. So I think, Tom, you may have a little bit of information on what you might have planned to do about this?
Yes. So Burkheimer is, they have a contract with the Lehigh County Tax Collection Committee. So that's the agency that oversees the collection of earned income tax pursuant to Commonwealth law. So the township has a seat on that committee. It's based on proportion of population. The school district also has a seat on that committee. But what we can do is try to, through that committee, to work on bolstering how they educate residents. I know their website is in the process, or they're looking at revamping it. A lot of the, you know, the website has a lot of good information, but you have to go to the website. You have to know how to go there. So I think we can approach Burkheimer. I know they do send out like new resident, new business packets. This might have been one of those cases where they didn't, they didn't simply know that your friend or your family member, I'm sorry, I didn't know which one, I didn't catch which one, but that they didn't, you know, it might have been a case where they just, they didn't, it got crossed in the mail, essentially. But we can do a better job, or we could suggest that they do a better job of educating. Yes. And that is the important distinction, because under Commonwealth law, the township cannot collect the earned income tax. It has to go through this committee, who then hires Burkheimer, and there's a contract in effect. So it is confusing if you're not familiar with the Commonwealth. So yes, we could certainly suggest that they try to educate new residents in a more informed manner.
If there's no other comment, we will move on to Agenda Item 5, which is the approval of our meeting minutes from our February 15th, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting. They have been distributed to the board for your review. Are there any comments or questions on our meeting minutes? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. There are no presentations this evening, no ordinances. We'll move on to Agenda Item 8, Resolutions. We have a resolution extending the conditional final approval granted to a major subdivision entitled Hotel Hamilton. I'll call on our planner for our Community Development Department, Greg Adams, to please present.
Thank you. This is an application to develop the properties located at 3051, 3125, 3127, and 3141 Hamilton Boulevard. The plan proposes a consolidation of the four lots, the alterations to the existing building at 3141 Hamilton Boulevard, and the construction of 192 parking spaces, three commercial buildings on a 5.36 acre tract. The applicant had received final plan approval at May 2020, Board of Commissioners meeting. At the May 5th and September 5th, 2021, March 16th and September 7th, 2022 meetings, the Board of Commissioners granted extensions to that approval. The applicant is here tonight to request a further six-month approval and give you an update on what's happened since the last visit in about three months ago. And at this point, the staff has no objection to this request. So the applicant's team is here to update you and take questions.
Thank you, Greg. Good evening. Is that microphone on, sir?
I'm sorry?
That's okay. Thank you very much.
As you know, I'm Bud Newton from Newton Engineering. With me tonight is Atul Patel and Henry Patel, the developers, and also Attorney Malcolmus and Attorney Hogan. They are working with Joe's office to work on the agreements for the project, and we've been working with Tony and Pittcock's office on all the plan issues. I have a detailed report like I did last time on it, but I don't want to bore you. I think we're basically going through all those conditions, and I think we've made a lot of progress on it. And I think I was hoping that we wouldn't have to be here tonight, but we're still, there's a lot of paperwork that's still being done on it. I don't know, Mark or Joe, if you guys want to say anything about where we stand with you guys, but I believe with Pittcock, we've gone through and have the cost estimate approved. We have all the descriptions approved. You guys have just looked at the plans, getting ready. I think we had the plans basically in shape to be recorded. I know Joe's office has been working with Attorney Hogan and Attorney Malcolmus to get all the agreements ready to be executed. So we're just in that process of getting all the paperwork done right now. We thought, I was hoping to be able to come to you tonight and say that we have the Penn dot Highway occupancy permit. We were just, we had two recent reviews from them, and most last couple of reviews were basically administrative items. So we contacted them to see if we could have the permit for tonight. We got, they got an email back from them just yesterday, and it said, from a HOP standpoint, the permit has some minor comments on ADA ramps pending single unit review. The permit is close to being issued upon revision in recent middle. So we went through five reviews. We hadn't had any planned comments the last two reviews, but now at the very last moment, they have a couple of planned comments. So we're close. They say we're close, but we don't have the permit in hand yet, but we should have that soon, and we should be able to get the rest of the paperwork done soon. But I'm not going to promise you that we're going to have it done this month or next month. It's, but it's coming. I don't know. Joe, Mark, you guys have anything that?
I would just say that, as the board is aware, there have been some unusual aspects of this project for several years now, and there are some unusual aspects of the final steps in tidying this up as well. So certainly from the Solicitor's Office, we have no objection to the time extension.
Thank you, Attorney Sater.
And I would add that from the engineering perspective, the plan is essentially done from a technical aspect. There are a few minor, I'll call them housekeeping items that need to be addressed, and one of the items is for them to obtain the highway occupancy permit, as Bud mentioned. So we have no objection to the extension as well.
Thank you very much. I personally don't have any objection to moving forward with extension of six months, but I would suggest for the board's discussion tonight that we do a three-month status update, which is what we had done the last time, to keep us up to date with progress. So I don't know if the other board members would be in agreement with that. Greg?
I have that baked in, that they appear at the June 7th BOC meeting.
Excellent. Thank you. Are there any board comments on this item?
I was going to suggest the same thing. I'm in favor of granting the extension with a condition that they come back to us in three months and provide us with a status update.
Very good. Any public comment? Yes, sir. If you come up to the microphone. Name and address again for the recording.
I'm Mark Bassis. That is my neighborhood. It's a lot of apartment buildings. I live in South Whitehall Township Chase. Is that not behind it? Am I wrong? Okay, I thought I heard apartments, like 119 apartments. I'm like, oh my gosh. Okay, never mind. Sorry.
Hotel Hamilton at the corner of Cedar Crest Boulevard and Hamilton Boulevard.
Okay, gotcha.
Thank you. So if there's no other public comment, and none from the board, did you have a comment?
I did have a quick comment. Last time you were here before the board, I had asked you about what your plans were for the King George. I know that this is a very important building to our citizens. It's a historic building. It's on the National Register, and I was happy to see that there is a historic easement going forward with it. And I just wanted to ask you, or tell you, I have high hopes that you'll do some protective measures as you're doing construction on that site to make sure that that building is structurally protected. I appreciate that so much. Thank you.
Very good comment. Thank you. Could you come up to the microphone? I'm sorry. For the benefit of those who are listening online, they cannot hear unless you're at the microphone.
You may have noticed that there was a good bit of damage that was done to the building during hurricane Sandy, and Mr. Patel has done quite a bit of repair and restoration work on that building since then, and he has gotten rid of all the nonhistoric aspects of the building. A lot of the work that Mr. McDermott had done with putting on the additions to the building, and the porch out front, and the dining room on the side, he got rid of those buildings and brought it back more towards historic nature. So the hope now is that sometime in the future, you can find some way of doing a historic renovation, adaptation of the building, you know, and get some type of use out of it. But as now, we don't have a particular user or anything for it. But he has done a lot of work to preserve it in its existing condition, and returning it more back to its historic roots.
Right. And throughout our comp plan process, we've been talking about adaptive reuse, and this is going to be a perfect example. I'm really grateful to you. Thank you.
Be nice to find something to be used for it.
Yeah, I'm excited to see what will happen. So thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Okay, do we have a motion to proceed with said resolution?
So moved.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 8B, we have revised a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township to adopt a formal policy entitled South Whitehall Township Appointment Policy for Appointed Citizen Boards, Committees, Commissions, and Councils. And I'll turn this over to our township manager, Tom Petrucci, for debate.
Thank you. So the Board of Commissioners adopted the appointment policy for citizen boards, committees, commissions, and councils during their Wednesday, February 1st, public regular meeting. The first interview to take place for an open position after the adoption of the policy occurred on Monday, February 6th at 5:00 p.m. Following this interview, the Board of Commissioners provided feedback on certain aspects of the policy, including the interview process, that were recommended for revision during the Wednesday, February 15th Board of Commissioners meeting. If the board is inclined, I have incorporated the suggestions that you made during the February 15th meeting and the resolution. With those said revisions is ready for adoption.
Thank you, Tom. I appreciate you revising this document with the comments from our last board meeting, and I'll open it up if there's any additional comments by the board at this time. Okay, hearing and seeing none. Are there any public comment on this agenda item? Okay, we need a motion to proceed with the revised policy.
I'll make the motion.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Moving on to Resolution C, a resolution appointing David C. Torrey to the South Whitehall Township Vacancy Board. Tom, would you assist on this as well?
Yes. So Section 530 of the First Class Township Code numerates procedures for filling of vacancies occurring on the Board of Commissioners or in the elected office of the township tax collector. So the vacancy board comes into effect if the Board of Commissioners is not able to fill that vacancy within the prescribed period of time. So with that being said, Mr. Torrey has, Mr. David C. Torrey has acknowledged his willingness to be reappointed as a member of the South Whitehall Township Vacancy Board. The township management views this as a perfunctory action in order to ensure that if a vacancy does occur, that we are prepared to handle said vacancy. So with that, I seek a motion to adopt the resolution.
Thank you, Tom. Is there any board discussion? Any from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said resolution?
Absolutely.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Torrey, for your willingness to serve. Moving on to Resolution D, we have a resolution authorizing township manager to execute the Laurel Fields easement agreement, and I will call on our township manager again to present.
Thank you. As part of the Tillman Street Bridge Utility Relocation Project, the township must remove and relocate the sanitary sewer line located on the Tillman Street Bridge crossing over the Northeast Extension. The acceptance and execution of the enclosed sanitary sewer and temporary construction agreement with Laurel Field Homeowners Association is necessary in order to proceed with the project in an expedient manner. This resolution allows the township manager to take the necessary steps to ensure that the agreement is executed on behalf of the Court Board of Commissioners. I would like to point out that the HOA has already executed this agreement, and work will actually begin tomorrow, assuming the board approves this tonight.
Excellent. Thank you. Open up to the board. Any discussion on this topic?
I'm sorry, Monday. Got ahead of myself.
Nothing from the board, anything from the public? Commissioner Hodges?
I'm sorry, I did have a quick question. I was looking through the proposal here, and it says township several times, township requires, township will do, whatever. Is that South Whitehall Township, or will Upper McConaughey be assisting us in any way?
Every reference to township is South Whitehall Township.
Okay, so we're doing all the work.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Any from the public? Hearing and
seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said resolution?
So moved.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, and thank you for your work on that. On to Resolution E, we have a resolution approving water sewer facilities planning module for 3350, 3354 Walbert Avenue, and we'll call on our Public Works Utility and MS4 Coordinator, Mike Elias. Oh, hello, Mike.
Good evening, everybody. TAC Allentown LLC is proposing to develop the property at 3350, 3354 Walbert Avenue with a 112,800 square foot self-storage facility. The proposed water usage for the facility is anticipated to be 30 gallons per day or 1 EDU. So Public Works is requesting a resolution approving 1 EDU sewer allocation for Montaire Group LLC proposed self-storage facility.
Very good. Thank you. I know that this particular proposed plan is on the agenda for the Planning Commission in a couple of weeks. This is just... for the Planning Commission in a couple of weeks. This is just taking care of the water and sewer on the front end before-
Just the planning module, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they had put a request in for 30 gallons per day, so we're just getting that ball rolling with DEB.
Excellent. Any board discussion?
I have a quick question for you, Mike. It's just out of curiosity, because I don't, I don't know. I was looking at page 41, paragraph number three. It was saying that the property currently has no sewer allocation. I'm curious, because there was a residence on it and the horse stables. So what was the method?
I believe it was septic at one point.
Okay.
I don't think it ever had sewer run to it. There was order to, I believe, one of the homes that was on the property at one time, but no sewer. So there was no sewer allocated to that parcel.
Any other board discussion? Anything from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve said resolution?
So moved.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Moving on to Agenda Item 9, motions. We have a motion to approve Drug Abuse Resistance Education DARE Program Memorandum of Understanding, and I'll call on our Township Chief of Police, Glenn Dorni.
Thank you, Commissioner. The Police Department has worked with the Parkland School District Administration and Solicitor's Offices to enter into a mutual agreement allowing the school district to pay the township for DARE instruction services provided by the Police Department. The Township Solicitor's Office and the Parkland School District Solicitor have reviewed the MOU and agree that it meets the requirements of its intended purposes. Requesting the Board of Commissioners make a motion to authorize the Township Manager to sign the MOU. This will allow the township to receive reimbursement for costs associated with teaching the DARE program within Parkland School District.
Very good, thank you, Chief Dorni.
You're welcome.
Any board discussion on this motion?
Just one, chief. Is this a break even?
Yeah, this will actually bring in all the fees due, just like we did with the SROs. We had previously charged in the past, and it was an audit finding that it wasn't addressed in the actual SRO agreement, because we do have DARE instructors that are not SROs. So therefore, we couldn't do it. And as soon as we found that out, we worked with the school district, because they value the program, so we wanted to make sure that we took care of that, so.
Good program for the schools and the kids. Thank you.
There's no other board discussion? Anything from the public? Hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to approve with said motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, chief. Moving on to Agenda Item 9B, we have a motion to proceed with payment to Lehigh County Authority regarding the Highland Street Water Main Replacement Project, and I will ask our Director of Township Operations, Herb Bender, to present.
Good evening. Administration is respectfully asking to move forward with the payment in the amount of $346,434.89 for the Highland Street Water Main Replacement Project. This was a Lehigh County Authority project. Due to South Whitehall having direct connects to the main that LCA had put in on Highland Street, it is in our contract that we are, have to pay 50% of the cost of that job, since we do take water from that main. The job has been completed. J. O. Bradley did it. All the water, new water main, new services are all hooked in. So now the last part for us to close this out is just make the payment to LCA.
Very good, Herb. Thank you. Any board discussion on this motion? Any from the public? Yes, sir.
And just one other thing. This is a budgeted capital project for this year. We did budget it for $347,590. So we did come $1,000 under budget.
Very nice. I appreciate you including that budget line item in our memo for our review. So if there's no other discussion, do I have a motion to proceed with said motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Herb. Moving on to Agenda Item C, we have a motion to proceed with advertising of bid regarding the asphalt contract, and Herb, I'm calling you again.
Yes, and, excuse me, in 2019 was the last time we went out to bid for the road building materials. Due to the economy, we seen the price of fuel go up, which drives the price of asphalt go up. So that's why we took our one-year contract and our three-year, one-year extensions that we were allotted to take. We are all out of the one-year extensions, so that's why we have to go out to bid this year. I did reach out to the City of Allentown to check their pricing, to see where we would come in line, and we could actually see, everyone noticed the price of fuel is down. So going out to bid now could get us a better price than waiting if fuel goes back up. So that's why we have chose to go out to bid right now and lock a price in.
Excellent. Thank you, Herb. I appreciate you always keeping an eye on the market and bringing these timely to us to help out the township budget. Is there any board discussion on this motion?
Just a quick question, Herb. I say, I know you said you talked to the City of Allentown. Do we ever look at going in with other municipalities to, for quantity, for pricing?
No, we don't. A lot of them do not do a co-op bid for this. A lot of people, like smaller townships and that, they outsource all this. So there, we would be able to go with the city and us, maybe Whitehall. I mean, I can look into it to see if they'd be willing, but a lot of times, it's CoStar's pricing. So you're basically almost all paying the same amount. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to reiterate that. The CoStar's pricing is pretty much in line with what the pricing is going to be, so it would be similar to that.
Excellent. No more board discussion? Anything from the public? Okay, hearing and seeing none, do I have a motion to proceed with said motion? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Herb.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item 10, Correspondence and Information. I'll ask our Township Manager, Tom, to please review.
Thank you. The upcoming public meetings are as follows. Monday, March 6, 7:00 p.m. is the Public Safety Commission. Wednesday, March 8, at 10:00 a.m. is the Civil Service Commission. Thursday, March 9, 7:00 p.m. is the Emergency Management Meeting, which I will note that that's at the Citronia Operations Center. Monday, March 13, 7:00 p.m., Parks and Rec Board. All of the meetings, unless otherwise specified, are here at the Township, and the details are posted on the website.
Excellent, thank you. I'd like to take a moment, since we're on Correspondence and Information, just to thank Chief Dorni. I know last night you held the graduation ceremony for the Citizens Police Academy for the second year, and you invited the commissioners. I know not all of us were able to attend, but those that were, it was really a wonderful evening to see everything that the Police Department does, and a wonderful opportunity to engage our citizens in partnering with our Police Department. So thank you and all the officers who assisted.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item 11, Old Business. We have our comprehensive plan update, and I'll ask our Township Manager to just give us an update on where we are with it.
Thank you. So I'm pleased to report on behalf of Community Development and the Township that the next Board of Commissioners meeting for March 15 at 7:00 p.m. will be, will include a public hearing to adopt the comprehensive plan. The public hearing is a requirement of the municipality's planning code. During the last Planning Commission meeting at the Township level, the Planning Commission moved to authorize the Planning Commission to go before the Board of, I'm sorry, authorize the comprehensive plan to go before the Board of Commissioners for your review and possible adoption. So the public hearing will enable any interested parties to make comments on whether the plan should be adopted, as is. If, unless there are any substantive changes required to the plan, the board will then have the opportunity to adopt the plan. So the plan has been posted on the website. There is a call-out page on the website as well that advertises the public hearing. The public hearing was advertised in the Parkland Press yesterday. No, I'm sorry, today, I believe it was first advertised, and then it will be advertised again a week from today to meet our requirements under the MPC. With that, if less, there's any other questions, that is the update at this time.
Excellent, Tom. Thank you for that update. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Commissioner Osborne?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Yes, I just have one question. We were given this document, I'm going to say a month or so ago. Has there been any comments that resulted in changes to this draft comprehensive plan, or is this what we'll be looking at for approval in our next meeting?
There were some minor changes in content, but none that changed the actual intent of the content. So there was more editing comments in nature. The MPC allows us to do that before, to make those editing-type changes before the public hearing is advertised. So we did have some comments. We did not change the plan in a way that you would describe it in terms of changing the actual intent of the plan. So if there was any typos, modifications of that nature, just clarifying the intent, we did make those types of comments, or take those comments and make those, effectuate those changes. But we did not change the overall intent of the plan.
There's, so Tom, there's nothing of significance that would change this draft document for our board to review between now and the next meeting?
No, not in my opinion. But that being said, I think it would be a good idea to print you off a fresh copy and make sure you have it between now and the next meeting. If, if, yeah.
I was going to add that the Planning Commission did have a list in our packet of the comments and the edits that were made, most typographical. I don't know if it would be helpful for you to distribute that to the board as well for our review?
Yes. We will, I will do that tomorrow. I'll ensure that you get the copy of the revised comprehensive plan, as well as the comments that were incorporated.
Good. Thank you.
I personally don't need a printed copy. If you could just email a digital copy, I think that would be sufficient for me.
Very good. Is everyone okay with that? Okay.
Any other comments on the comprehensive plan? Okay, very good. Moving on to Agenda Item 12, Direction and Discussion. We have nothing on the agenda. Moving on to Agenda Item 13, Courtesy of the Floor. Again, it's opportunity for anyone in the public to make any comment on non-agenda items. Anyone have anything else to add this evening? Anything online? Very good. Moving on to Agenda Item 14, I need a motion to authorize payment of our invoices and disbursements.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. We have no executive session this evening, so Agenda Item 16, I need a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good. This motion, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.